Oh, okay. So you know I'm senator. Hello, my name is Susan Weisfeld and I'm pleased to moderate tonight on behalf of the League of Women Voters, which is a nonpartisan organization. I am not a member of this community, I live in Yonkers, and I so apologize if I mispronounce any most name. At this time, I ask the candidates and the audience to make sure to please put your cellphones on vibrate, as they can't be used during a forum. I will be asking questions submitted in advance to me via email by members of the community. No one has seen these questions except me. We thank those who have taken the time to submit the questions. This is an important way that we can align the views of your candidates. I don't think there will be time for additional questions, but if there is time, we will give you some index cards and I will ask for them to be given to me after all the submitted email questions have been asked. The ground rules for this evening's debate are as follows. The candidates have agreed to begin in alphabetical order. The opening statement will be by Mr. McLaughlin and the closing statement will begin with this volunteer. A pronouncement?
You did.
Okay. Throughout the debate, I will rotate the order of candidate response. For all statements by each candidate, the timekeeper, what's your name?
Matthew.
The timekeeper Matthew will indicate 30 seconds remaining. Ship them up, 30 seconds. And then a stop sign when time is up. Candidates must stop speaking but can finish their sentence. There will be no questions addressed to only one candidate. All questions will be answered by both candidates. And please know that throughout the debate, no comments over personal material will be rebuttaled. And please know that the candidates will speak to the audience and not to each other. Each, okay, Matthew, each candidate will have up to two minutes for an opening statement with no rebuttal. The order of closing statements, as I said, will be in the reverse order as the opening statements, and they will be one and a half minutes. At the conclusion of the opening statements, I will ask questions submitted by email by members of this community. Each candidate will have up to one minute to answer and there will be no rebuttal. However, during the entire debate, each candidate is allowed two rebuttals with 30 seconds each. If you wish to rebut, just raise your hand and request a rebuttal after both of you have finished answering the question. After we have finished with the audience's questions, candidates will have up to one and a half minutes for a closing statement, and there are no rebuttals to closing statements. And one more thing, please know, league rules do not allow taking photos or personal videos during the forum, and no campaign material is allowed in this room. And now, I would like to introduce in alphabetical order the candidates for Pelham Town Supervisor, Dan McLaughlin and Teresa Mohan. (applause) Mr. McLaughlin, you have two minutes for an opening statement.
Welcome, everyone. Glad you're here. My name is Dan McLaughlin, and I am running for reelection as a town supervisor. We moved to Pelham in 1985. My wife and I raised two children here, both graduating from the Pelham Public School System. My son and family have moved back to Pelham and will also be raising their children here. And who wouldn't want to move back here? The excellent schools, the vast recreation program offerings, and most of all, the caring and generous residents who truly make Pelham what it is. I'm running for reelection because I care about Pelham. I want to make sure my grandkids will feel the same about Pelham in the next 40 years to come. For the last 17 years, I served on the town council. In the last six years, I have been fortunate to serve as town supervisor, a role I'm hoping to continue. My number-one goal has always been to ensure that the town continues to offer outstanding programs and services that make me proud to call this community home. From well-maintained athletic fields to the library, the recreation programs, the accurate tax assessments and tax collections, EMS services, and cherished events like the Memorial Day and Halloween parades and the summer music concerts, these are not just services, they are the heart of our community. At the same time, I believe in doing all this within a budget that is both responsible and sensitive to the needs of all of our taxpayers. It is about striking the right balance, delivering quality while being fiscally mindful. One of the greatest achievements I'm most proud of is bringing the Pelham EMS program to life, a program that alongside Deputy Supervisor Ray Zemansky, we worked hard to implement. Our efforts were recently recognized when Pelham EMS was named the 224 EMS Agency of the Year. That recognition reflects not just our dedication, but the incredible impact this service has had on our residents. I'm committed to continuing this level of leadership, practical, passionate, and always putting the community first. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mohan.
Thank you.
Two minutes.
Thank you. I'm Teresa Mohan, and I'm running for town supervisor. And let me tell you why. My husband, Peter Moskowitz, and I moved to Pelham over 25 years ago, and we've raised our four daughters right here. I've coached rec, travel, sports, I've been president of PTAs, and I love this community. And I've tried to make it better. Of course, some of you may know me as a village trustee, where I'm serving my third term. I've delivered results. Most recently, I've helped secure multiple grants to further our sustainability goals without raising any taxes. I'd also like to tell you about my career. I've served as a general counsel, a corporate secretary, and the head of human resources for organizations of 15,000 people. I'm currently teaching leadership and ethics at Fordham Law. I think this is the type of experience our town leadership needs. Our current leadership does not have a roadmap for our future. They are reactive, not proactive. We deserve a government that doesn't maintain what we have but plans boldly for what's coming next. That's why I'm so proud to be running alongside Councilwoman Kara McLaughlin and amazing new candidates Michael Jenks for council, Eileen Miller for clerk, and Erica Winter for receiver of taxes. They are all brimming with new ideas. Together, we will bring energy, transparency, and a strategic vision to town hall, because Pelham deserves leadership that is ready for the future. I can't end without thanking Dan McLaughlin for his community service, not just in his role as a councilperson and as a supervisor, but also his role in the civics. And I'd like to also thank the League of Women Voters for bringing us here tonight for this forum. Thank you.
And now, we're ready for the questions. We have one minute each to answer. We start with Ms. Mohan. How does the role and responsibilities of the town supervisor compare to the roles and responsibilities of the village mayor and village manager or administrator?
That's a very good question, and it's quite a different role. I've studied the town laws since putting myself out here to run, and I know that the supervisor's role is very different. The supervisor is both the leader of the council and also the administrator and CEO of the town. So in that sense, the supervisor has much more responsibility than the mayor in the town, and much more fiscal responsibility, and is more similar to a combination of both the mayor and the administrator.
Thank you. Mr. McLaughlin?
I've been the supervisor for six years, I've been the deputy supervisor for four years before that, and I disagree about the difference job that the mayors have versus the supervisors. The mayors have a much more difficult job, as far as I'm concerned, because they run the essential services. They run the police department, they run the fire department, they run the roads and things like that. In our particular case, we always take over whatever the villagers will not do, and we run the courts, we run the recreation programs, we run the library. Most recently, we now run EMS, which should be an essential service, but it's not an essential service at the current time, but we've taken it over. And when you talk about having things new, that's something we did. Ray Zemansky and I took that initiative on our own, and we now have one of the best EMS programs in Westchester County. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, we start with Mr. McLaughlin. What is the one thing you think should be done differently by the town government than it has done in the past four years?
Well, I think one of the things is the EMS service, which we now do run, and that was something that was not run since I've been on the board. So other than that, we continue to expand our recreation programs, we continue to have library programs that are one of the best in Westchester, and we will continue to expand those offerings as we go forward.
Thank you, Ms. Mohan.
You know, I think we can all agree, we're all here, we're putting the time in, that Pelham is a very special place. And it's not just a special place because of the municipalities that we have, it's the people and the organizations that we have. And one thing that I think in the next four years Pelham, the town of Pelham is in desperate need of, is a strategic plan. Because if we're not thinking about the future, we're not planning for the future. We have wonderful services, we have an EMS, we have a rec, but we're not thinking about the Pelham of five years from now and how we can grow into that. So I think the most important thing we need to do is understand as a community, understand as all of our community groups, how we can come together and prioritize what it is that we think is important, and then create a strategic plan to get there.
Okay. Next question, Ms. Mohan. Sorry. Can you commit to reaching across the aisle and across entities to work together in a bipartisan manner? And what are some of the ways that you can do that, or areas that you think need improvement? And also, can you name a time when you were tasked with building consensus in a group of people with varying and diverse viewpoints?
So I'll take the first part of the question first with a story. When I first ran for village trustee, I was running as a Democrat, Mr. Pataki here was running as a Republican, and we ran together. And that is the way I've approached my time here in Pelham. I do think that as a community, we can agree on things and we can prioritize what's important to us. I have no problem reaching across the aisle, I'm not sure that there is much of an aisle here in Pelham. So, and the second thing is, actually, in February this year, I got my mediation certificate from the state of New York, from the court system. I think that bringing people together is the most important role leaders have. You constantly are dealing with people who have different opinions, and finding the middle ground, finding a way that we can move forward together is what makes our community strong, it's what makes us as a people strong, and that is definitely what I would plan to do and what I do do in my life.
Three, Mr. McLaughlin.
Just working on the town board says that I interact with other people. On the town board I have right now, I have an independent, I have three Democrats, and I work continuously with them. One of them is Councilwoman Burke, who I work with in terms of traffic, in terms of getting things done in micro-transit. Reaching across the aisle is not very difficult for me, because I work with the villagers, and I work with the mayor, and I work with the mayor's administrator. Same thing with Pelham Manor, and I work very closely with them. And if you can't do that as a town supervisor, you shouldn't be running for town supervisor. Thank you.
Okay. The next question, we start with Mr. McLaughlin. How can we continue to promote economic development of our downtown area without losing the ambiance of a friendly and accessible village community?
The town board, the town supervisor, has nothing to do with developing the downtown of Pelham. That has to do with the mayor and his board of trustees. We support whatever we feel that they want to do, but we do not have any authority nor the ability to interfere with downtown either way.
Do you want to answer the question?
Yes, please. I think that there is a lot the supervisor can do in terms of bringing the community together to get alignment about how we want to develop the town. It may not be authority as the supervisor, but it is influence that can be asserted. And as a community, and I do want to point out, the town has two very historic buildings here in our town that are very cherished by our community. Keeping those where they are and making sure that they're still a pride of our community is really important. So I think that there's a lot of soft skills as a supervisor you can bring to really influence the way we're moving forward as a community. I may not be able to influence zoning for the Village of Pelham or the Village of Pelham Manor, but I can certainly have conversations with both mayors to make sure that we're aligned in where we're going in the future.
Thank you. Next question, Ms. Mohan. Do you have a plan for existing town space vacancies, especially now that the village police department has left?
So one of the things in preparing for running for town supervisor that I did was review the minutes since 2022, I think, the last four years. And one of the things I noticed in those minutes is that oftentimes, there was discussion among the town council about creating a facilities plan, a plan, a strategic plan for our facilities. And that plan never was created. And I think the first thing I would do is to create a strategic plan for our facilities. We have amazing resources here, we need to think about how we want to use them to the benefit of all of our different groups in Pelham, and come up with a plan to do that.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin.
I disagree. Sorry? No, 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 no. I disagree that the town council has not done anything. We've actually, if you've read the minutes and came to meetings, you would know that we've spoken multiple times about when the police department was leaving downstairs and what we were going to do with downstairs. And the police department finally left in February of this year, and we immediately brought in contractors, we immediately brought in architects, and we have downstairs EMS all set up with their own bedrooms, their own kitchen, their own refrigerators and stoves. That used to be the jails downstairs, actually. And we've also now taken over where the police precinct entrance was, and we're putting the court clerks in there. And we've had that not only constructed, but we're actually waiting to get the bulletproof glass. So we've done everything we need to do, we got into premises.
May I have one of my rebuttals? I'm not disagreeing that you have done things with the facilities. My point is that they haven't been communicated to the community, they haven't been part of a strategic plan for the community. The community has not weighed in on what kind of use they wanted to use downstairs. And one of the biggest problems we have is, I think since 1992, this meeting room has not been ADA compliant, and we still don't have a plan to make it ADA compliant.
Okay. Ready? Okay. Mr. McLaughlin, you start on this one. In a time of increasing climate-related challenges, do you have any expertise or experience in disaster relief efforts, either professionally or as a volunteer? And how have those experiences shaped how you might approach your role as town supervisor in the event of an environmental emergency such as flooding, storm damage, et cetera?
Actually, the New York State required all towns and villages to come up with an emergency plan, if in fact something happens. And I made that emergency plan, I filed it, and it is currently with New York State and Westchester County, and it's actually going to be included in our human resources handbook that will be given out. So there is a plan in place.
So, after Hurricane Sandy, where I grew up, I grew up in Rockaway, my home that I grew up in, and many of our neighbors' homes were destroyed. And one of the first things I did was actually create a disaster relief legal clinic with the help of the New York City Bar Association to come in and help people understand what they could do in the face of emergency with regard to FEMA and other resources that were available to them. So I have firsthand experience of what a climate event can do to a community. I think I'm also on the sustainability advisory board, I'm the liaison in the village, and there's a lot we can do as a community, not just disaster preparedness, but also trying to get ahead of the issues with regard to flood mitigation and all of the other things that we can do to mitigate the issues that will impact our citizens.
Thank you. Next question, Ms. Mohan. Affordable childcare within Pelham is in extreme need, and childcare facilities are less out. How can the town support the growth of one of the oldest nonprofits, Pelham Children's Center, with achieving its mission of striving to make its program affordable to families of varying financial needs?
So the Pelham Children's Center is housed in the bottom of Durango, for those of you that aren't aware. And one of the things, they lease the property from the town. And recently, the air conditioning broke in the children's center, and the town had to deal with the issue for their leasing. I think one of the things that we can support that is by making sure the facilities that they're leasing from the town are at the highest standard that they can be for us, and that we're dealing with them in a way that makes their jobs easier in providing affordable care to the people in our community.
Do you want me to repeat the question?
No, no. We have the best, this board and my relationship with the children's center is the best it's ever been in the 20 years or 17 years that I've been on this board. I work very, very closely with the person that runs it, Steve. When the air conditioner broke, we immediately ordered a new air conditioner and allocated $19,000 for that air conditioner. We've worked with them on flooding, and we've worked with them adding parking spaces in the parking lot for their administrators and their teachers. We have never had a better relationship with the children's center than we have today.
Okay, thank you. Next question, Mr. McLaughlin. Our downtown has so much potential to be vibrant and accessible, especially for young families and residents who want to walk or bike. Would you encourage the implementation of bike lanes, especially to and around town and the train station? What about increasing more bike racks near restaurants, shopping, and the train, as those tend to get filled up?
Once again, I have to answer it and say that would not be in the bailiwick of the town supervisor or the town council. That would be with the village, and the village is responsible for, if there would be bike lanes, and if the village is responsible for putting up bike racks or anything else. We could encourage the village to do that, but we have no authority to do that.
So this kind of goes back to my opening statement. I think the town sits, it encompasses both villages, and can be a really good center for us to come together as a community to figure out what our priorities are. Bike lanes and walking accessibility is one of our priorities. It's the people that are moving here are moving for that reason, and making sure that it's safe is a role that we can advocate for. We may not be able to paint the lanes, we may not be able to control the roads, but we can certainly advocate for them and bring people together to discuss those across both villages. And that's a role I think that the town supervisor can play.
I did want to say, I do not live here, and the questions were submitted by the people in the community for this debate. So if they're not appropriate, I apologize. And the next one also might be, we start with Ms. Mohan. Since the Manor has plenty of tax revenue, and it has been in the black for several years, can you commit to not raise village or Manor taxes next year? And what about the Village of Pelham?
So I think here, we all understand that there's four municipalities, taxing municipalities in the town of Pelham. There's the school district, which has the largest budget, which is almost $100 million. And then there's the two villages, which are around, I think, $18 and $16 million each. And then there's the town, which has the smallest budget of all three. Our budget, we have no, and I'm sure Dan's going to say the same thing, we have no influence on the budgets of the other three municipalities. And my goal would be to keep taxes, to not increase taxes here in the town of Pelham. I think that there's a lot of other ways we can accomplish our goals without any increase in taxes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
I'll just add, since Teresa didn't bring it up, ours budget is $6 million versus the $18, $18, and $90 million of the school. Whoever asked that question is asking it at the wrong debate.[1576.41][1576.41](laughter) I don't want to add anything to what Teresa said, because it is what it is.
Just the messages. Okay, so maybe this one also. What can be done to enforce current traffic laws, especially sign-running, speeding, and crossing intersections in front of schools?
Well, that's sort of the same thing. However, talking about dealing with a bipartisan issue, both Councilman Burke and I have been working on solving a crisis at Glover Field, and it happens to be in the Pelham Manor, but it's also in Mount Vernon, and it's also Westchester County, and there's a problem with the children going from the high school into the athletic fields. And we actually have a study that was done, and we're supposed to get the results next week, on how maybe we can reroute that traffic. And we did that on our own initiative, and we did it for Westchester County, and I have to thank the county executive for getting this study done for us. But that's a little bit outside of what we normally do, but both Kristin and I thought it would be helpful if we could get something done there.
So as a current Village of Pelham trustee, for the next three months at least, I might be able to help. But as the town supervisor, I do think this is another example where, and what Dan, a PTA-led pedestrian safety committee came together and wanted to engage both villages in pedestrian safety across the town. And I think, again, because the town supervisor sits at the intersection of both of these things, they can play a role in bringing people together to plan across both villages.
Okay. Another question, Ms. Mohan starts. I am concerned, not me, I am concerned about the limited number of social and recreational activities for our teens. What more can we do as a town to provide healthy opportunities for our teens to socialize and have fun together?
So last night, Pelham Together, which is a local organization that really helps our teens and our youth, had hosted, their youth council hosted their third annual town hall, and I've been at all three. And I do think there's tremendous opportunities to engage our youth and our high school students specifically, in helping them help us figure out how we can, what we can do for them. I just had two, my two daughters just graduated high school, so I'm fairly close to this. But one of the things I think we can do for them is create driver's ed programs for them through our rec program, because everybody is always scrambling to figure out where to do driver's ed. So, but I think that's just, I don't mean that as, but that's one example of things that we can do to improve the lives of youth, and there's obviously partnering with Pelham Together and the other organizations in our communities. To encourage them in what they've already identified as what they want to do is something to do is something that we can do.
We actually had a budget meeting yesterday and, and discussed Pelham Together, and we actually increased their budget from us by 50%. So we are well aware of what we can do with Pelham Together. But in addition to that, we have a recreation department that runs a teen night at the YMCA. And we, we do that, and we normally get 30 to 40 to 50 kids. Having youth activities has been a problem in the town of Pelham since 1654, when we were incorporated. I was on the board when we had, we actually had a teen, teen center right by the bakery. And we had one of the school teachers run it for us. And we had a pool table and we had different games down there. So we've been working on that and we are very interested in making sure that whatever we can do, we will do. Thank you.
Okay. I don't know about this one. What services do you see can be combined with the manor and the town to serve money, to save money on contracts? Do you foresee any possible sharing of services with other close by municipal entities, starting Mr. McGlaughlin?
Again, wrong debate. We, we, we do any service that the villagers do not want to do. So we do the courts. There used to be three courts in Pelham, but now we do the courts. We do the EMS. We take, we've taken that over. And again, I have to say it's, Ray and I think it's one of our best achievements that we've made on the town board. So wherever we can do combined services, we will do it. But again, it's the villages that have those services.
I, I would agree with you, Dan. I think it's, it's driven by the residents of each village in terms of what they want the town to take over. The town has to take over whatever the villages don't want to perform. And that's, you know, what, that's the law. So it's not a question of what the supervisor may want or what the council may want, it's a question of what each of the villages want.
Okay. All right, this one. What would your directive to the police be with regards to ICE agents insisting that they might search anywhere they want without judicial subpoenas?
Well, again, the police are both controlled by the villages. But I think that one of the things that makes our community really special is that we try to really come together as a community. Hearts and Homes for Refugees was founded here, and I think it really, it kind of epitomizes the spirit of this community. I'm sure as a community, we would come together to encourage the village mayors and the police chiefs to, to be kind.
This is, this, this reminds me of someone that ran for an office in the town and said they were running it because they wanted to do gun control. We don't do gun control. That's not what we do. We don't do ICE. That's not what we do. The town does not have a police force. So there's nothing we can do about the village police doing what they feel they have to do. Again, different, different debate.
Okay. You can start writing a question. Okay, Mr. McGlaughlin, how can personal data stored by the town be secured and safeguarded from hacking?
We actually have a gentleman that's here tonight. Joe is a computer, a computer person. And we've, we, we have meetings once a year with staff to make sure they understand that they can't let somebody come in and hack us. So we, we've stopped their ability to go onto the internet and do things outside of what they have to do for the job. So we are very cognizant of that, and we make sure that we are protected and, and our computer person is on top of that.
So I, I spent a lot of my career at IBM in the in-house legal department, and data security and, and privacy security was something that was very important, and I was very familiar with the technologies. As a general counsel of several companies, I was subjected to several hacks, including a ransomware attack. I think that making sure as a community, as a, as a municipality, that we protect that data is of ultimate importance. And understanding the technologies that go into that and how to do it is something that I think the supervisor can play a very big role in.
Okay. Okay, this is the last question. And it is now, we now have 10 more minutes after this question. I'm sorry, I'm a lag question. So Joan has postcards. If anyone has a question, just raise your hand and show the postcards and X cards. And you can write the question and give it to me. And please make it relevant for this to be known. Okay, okay, Ms., Ms. Mohan, what is your vision for the town of Pelham in three to five years? And how about in 10 years? Do you have a strategic plan?
Yes, I do. And I, I think that that's one of the reasons I'm running. I think we live in an amazing community, and we need to be planning for the future, and we need to really protect the amazing things about our community and then build on them. And that requires a strategic plan. And the way I would start that strategic plan is really by coming up with a, a townwide survey, an extensive survey on what we value as a community, so we can prioritize those things, come up with a strategic plan for those things, and put an action plan in place to make sure we get to those things. That plan would be an immediate plan, it would be a five-year plan, and it would be a 10-year plan. It would be comprehensive, and it would cover all aspects of our community, not just, not just rec, but it would uncover, include rec, it would include our facilities, it would include the library, community spaces, our seniors, how, getting them a new community space. And, and it would, it would really reflect the priorities that we would come together with as a community.
Thank you.
You don't want me here around for the next 10 years, by the way. But that being said, we do have plans. And one of the things that I have to correct Teresa on is that we do, we do, we are building an elevator, and we are becoming AHD compliant. We actually have a grant of over $300,000 for that elevator. We have an architectural drawing on it. We've had three people come in, three contractors. And we are going to have an elevator that's going to run up and down. That, that elevator is especially for me, okay? Because I'm tired of walking up and down those stairs. But we are planning, and we are planning how to change the townhouse so we can accommodate the senior citizens and some of the things they need. So there's been planning going on ever since I've been on this board.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions? If it's not, we have other questions.
Yes. I don't know if there are cards going on. You probably have to submit something in writing. But I don't, are there cards?
She's asking you about another question.
Well, it's obvious that people are not clear on what the town does. And so I wonder if each of you can talk about why you feel that is true and what, what if anything needs to be done about it.
Okay, so the last person who will start?
I've been here 40 years. And I can tell you that people that have lived here for 50 years don't know the difference between what the town and the villages do. And that happens, we, we had, our staff had a conversation about this just this past Tuesday or Wednesday. Some of the staff that work for us, now that they're working for us, now realize what we do and what the villages don't do. And what I did a long, long time ago is I created a chart on what each, what each village does and what the town does. And I've handed this out at senior citizen meetings, I've handed it out at the retired men's club meetings, I've handed it out to civics. Wherever I can, I hand this out, so people know what we're doing. And I can tell you that people are calling here on a daily basis, thinking about zoning changes, thinking about what the police are doing, thinking about traffic violations, that we have nothing to do with. It's, it's, it's not something that's going to be solved for 13,700 people. But if they want a list, I have it.
So, I, can I answer?
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. I, I do, I do know that there's confusion often in village meetings. People will come to talk about rec, and people will call us the town, and so there is confusion. But I think we can come up with a lot of creative ways to make it fun for people to understand what the differences are. We can come up with TikToks, we can come up, we can come, we can, we can engage the community on this and, and also reach out to newcomers as they come, because we know who the newcomers are, and give them a welcome packet to Pelham that explains who their, who their municipality is and what they do. So I think that we can come up with creative ways to address that, and it would be a pleasure to do that.
Well, I have another one, sure. No, I feel sorry. There was a moment where there was a little disagreement about the finances of the town and, or it seemed like it. And I'm not sure there was, so I just want to clarify that. Teresa, Ms. Mohan?
Well, I, I didn't, I didn't hear the question.
I haven't, I haven't gotten, I'm just referencing, you said that the town budget was $6 million and suggested that Ms. Mohan had that wrong, and she may have, but I thought.
I, I never said she had that wrong.
Okay. But, but the $6 million, and $6 million, and I believe Teresa that you mentioned $4 million, but I think you were talking about the taxes, not the budget. Is that correct? So those are two different figures you were both quoting, and neither of you are, are wrong. They're just two different numbers. Have I got that right?
I think so, yes. I mean, the, the, the adopted 2025 budget has the, has the right numbers, so. But, and if you look at that, it's basically, it's, it's almost $7 million.
Thank you. I don't have any. Okay, so, you have a closing statements. And Ms. Mohan, you have a question.
Okay. So, thank you all for being here. My experience as a trustee, as an executive, and an educator has taught me that good leadership means listening, followed by planning, and then results. I don't believe our current leadership has that philosophy. Our leaders haven't kept pace with our potential and have been maintaining instead of modernizing. So as supervisor, my first priority, as I already mentioned, will be making sure you're heard. That starts with conducting a comprehensive town survey to learn what our community truly needs and values. From that starting point, we'll create a roadmap of Pelham's future. I have new ideas that I can't wait to share with you, like a community center, like a modern senior center, advocating for senior housing, leadership programs for our high school students. And let me stress that we will do this without raising taxes through grant funding and strategic planning. I love Pelham as much as you do and Dan does. I've spent the last 25 years here, working to make it better. But I can't take this next step without you. I'm Teresa Mohan, and I'd be honored to earn your vote for town supervisor.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks to everyone, but I especially want to thank Peter Pataki, because Peter Pataki set this whole thing up and worked very hard with the League of Woman Voters to get this done. Thank you, Peter. For the past six years, as a town supervisor, I've worked hard to keep our town running smoothly. Balanced budgets, improving our parks, supporting local businesses, keeping taxes steady, all the while focusing on what matters most, the community. I'm proud to be running on both the Republican and Neighborhood Party lines, because this job isn't about politics, it's about people. It's about showing up, solving problems, and making sure our town stays a great place to live. My opponent may have enthusiasm, but experience matters when you're dealing with real responsibilities, managing budgets, responding to storms, helping residents day-to-day. So I'm asking for your vote, not for a party, but for a neighbor who's proven they can do the job and will keep putting this town first. And I'd like you all to vote for my team, Pelham teammates, reelect Ray Zemansky for town board, vote for Christina Chinisi for town board, reelect Kathy Mazzaro as tax receiver, and Maureen Borsella as town clerk. This well-experienced team will continue to serve the town residents in the way they should be served. Thank you.
Thank you. The town, I wanted to take a picture of Andrew.
Yeah, that's right.
All right, we're going to take a brief recess, and then we're going to have the next forum, which is where the town, the town side. So. So-
You know, Mike?
I just didn't-
Need a gavel.
And again, Tom, if you haven't been here before, I'm asking you to please put your phones or vibrate candidates also. Okay. I am going to ask some of the same questions. These questions were submitted to me by email, and I have no control over what your people know or don't know.
Neither do we.
Okay, so again, we'll see it. Okay, my name is Susan Weisbaum, and I am very pleased to be here moderating on behalf of the League of Women Voters, which is a nonpartisan organization, and I think they know how to pronounce everybody's name, but if I mispronounce it, I'm sorry. Okay, so the questions were sent to me in advance by email. No one has seen these questions, but some of them will be the questions that were asked by Susan, I'm sorry. But I really thank those who took the time to submit the questions, because this is an important way to learn the rules of your candidates. If there is time for additional questions, like the last forum, I will ask the questions from the floor, but first we will ask the questions that were submitted to me. And the ground rules are a little bit different. You have 90 seconds for your opening statement, and again, you have one minute to respond to each question, and you have two rebuttals for each candidate. And if you want to rebut to anything, just raise your hand, and you can do so, just let me know. Every question will be answered by each one of you, and you will respond to the audience, not to rebut. And also, throughout the debate, no comments of a personal nature will be committed. And I think that's it. Okay, and league rules do not allow taking photos or personal videos during the forum, and no campaign material is permitted in this room. Now, I would like to introduce, well, the candidates will answer in alphabetical order, and then we will rotate throughout the debate. So I will introduce the candidates for Pelham Town Council: Michael Jenks, Karen McLaughlin, and Ray Sizemansky.
Very good.
Okay, so, in alphabetical order. Mr. Jenks, can you start with your opening statement? You'll have 90 seconds.
I'm Mike Jenks. I moved to Pelham six years ago. Actually, I want to first thank the League of Women Voters. 20 years ago, I first moved to New Jersey out of college, and there was a local election like two months after I moved there, and if it weren't for the League of Women Voters in New Jersey, I wouldn't have known anything about local politics. So it's a great resource that we have, and I really appreciate that you guys are able to do this. So I'm Mike Jenks. I moved to Pelham six years ago, and I've learned in Pelham time that makes me a spring chicken. My, so my wife and I actually got married in our backyard, and we have a five-year-old daughter, Mackie, and a six-month-old daughter, Sawyer. And I am running for town council because I want to bring a perspective of a newer resident, a younger resident, who is planning to be here for 20 to 30 years or more, and make sure that we have a thoughtful, strategic, sustainable, and inclusive vision of how the town is going to operate for the time that we're going to be here.
Thank you. Ms. McLaughlin?
Thank you. Hi, I'm Karen McLaughlin, and I'm running for reelection for the Pelham Town Council. First of all, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for providing this forum for us to share our ideas for Pelham's future. I'd also like to thank Molly Geralamo for setting up the space and being our videographer, and thank you to Ruthann D. Simone for helping in all the numerous ways she does. My husband, Chris, and I have lived in Pelham for 20 years. We raised our children here, we've made lifelong friends, and built a life in this incredible community. That's why I ran for office in 2021, because I wanted to give back to the community that I call home. Over the last four years, I've really gotten things done. I pushed for and voted to bring Pelham its very own ambulance service. It is now an award-winning model for the county and the state. I helped launch a new, easier-to-use recreation website and app. Yes, you can now register online. We've expanded programming for all ages, including STEM classes after school, library story hours for our toddlers, pickleball for just about anybody who wants to, indoors and out, and Mahjong, and much, much more. I also show up outside of town hall, collaborating with organizations like the Library, the Art Center, Pelham Together, the Chamber of Commerce, and the American Legion, because building a great town takes working together across all the organizations, and there's a lot more to do. We need a community space, a dedicated EMS, and more importantly, we need a clear, forward-thinking plan for Pelham's future. I'm excited to work with my running mates, and I hope to count on your vote on November 4th. Thank you.
My turn, right? Okay, thank you. I'm going to thank the League of Women Voters also, but I'm here tonight with my neighbors, not my opponents, because they are my neighbors, and we all care deeply about Pelham. I'm asking for your support on November 3rd so I can continue servicing this wonderful community. This election's not about party or politics, or what's happening nationally. It's about Pelham, our families, our safety, and the quality of our lives, and that's been my approach on the board since I was elected. It's been an honor to represent you. I've lived here all my life, and I'm proud to say I'm the first female deputy supervisor in the town of Pelham. I'm not doing that to brag, I'm saying it with pride. It reflects how far women have come in this nation, in this town, in this world, so I'm proud of that. I'm also proud of the collaborative spirit on our diverse town board that's led by Dan, and it is diverse. We established our own Pelham EMS district guided by a diverse community-based committee that included our local police, fire, and EMS experts. We partnered with Eastchester to deliver that service. We secured grants from Assemblywoman Amy Pollan and Senator Natalia Fernandez to buy our own ambulance, and we have completed a comprehensive update of all town policies and the employee manual. I would like to continue to do this to complete our application to become a permanent EMS district, complete our town hall. Sorry, I have to stop. I talk a lot.
Okay, so now we're ready for the questions, and we begin with Ms. McLaughlin. Can you commit to reaching across the aisle and across entities to work together in a bipartisan manner, and what are some of the ways that you can do that, or areas that you think need improvement? Also, can you name a time where you were asked, tasked with building consensus in a group of people with varying and diverse viewpoints?
In my role on the town council, as Dan mentioned, we have three Democrats and one independent and one Republican by registration. There was a lot of debate about the ambulance service, and initially, the RFPs came back, and they were expensive, but I said we need this service, and we need to support the people, and we worked together with Moore Curtin, Kristen Burke, Ray Zamansky, and Dan McLaughlin, all five of us, to find funding from our state representatives and then work together with the Committee of People. Ray did the lion's share of that, but we were all in there supporting her and figuring out where to find the solutions.
Thank you.
Well, yes, I've been tasked. We've been working for, I've been on this board 21 years. I know I don't look old enough, but I have been. I've lived here all my life, so we did do this all together. We not only did the EMS project, we kind of did the manual together. This is a very well-oiled working board. I just have to say that to everybody, and I serve with them every single day.
Thank you, Mr. Jenks.
I want to fully answer the question, so could you repeat it?
Sure. Can you commit to reaching across the aisle and across entities to work together in a bipartisan manner, and what are some of the ways that you can do that, or areas that you think need improvement? Also, can you name a time where you were tasked with building consensus in a group of people with varying and diverse viewpoints?
Yeah, so I can, I can reach across whatever aisle or whatever gap there is, just on the basis of my approach to analytical creative problem solving. I invite feedback from everyone, and in particular, I'm going to, in my day job, I'm the chief operating officer and general counsel for Independent Compounding Pharmacy way, way, way out in Brooklyn. And we just had a meeting last week. I have to incorporate the views of owners, managers, staff, vendors, and I have to do that on a daily basis. So one of the things that I like to do when problem solving is, if I have an idea for a solution, I ask everybody there to tell me why that solution isn't going to work. And what that exercise does is it allows us to understand where risks are and where those risks can be mitigated as well.
I'll get to finish your sentence. Okay, that's true.
Next question. Do you want to start with Ms. Sizemansky? What is the one thing you think should be done differently by the town government than it has done in past years?
What do I think has to be done differently by town government? Okay, that's kind of a stumper I'm trying to think of. I don't know, maybe better communication, more openness, more disclosures.
Ms. Jenks?
Yeah, I agree with Ray. I think that communication and clear communication transparency is definitely something that can be improved. Personally, I think that the town of Pelham website could use a huge overhaul and be better organized and present more salient information in more readily accessible places. But I also think that that project is a natural result of having an established, clear, strategic, and comprehensive plan that has input from all community members, and also that's published on the town website as well, and also has milestones and timelines where we can show as a board or as a supervisor or as a town that not only have we put this plan together, we are achieving the milestones that we set out for ourselves.
Okay, Ms. McLaughlin?
I would agree, we need a strategic plan, and there are a few things that we could include in that, an overhaul, which is in the beginning phases of the website, to be more communicative and easily, for the residents to access information more easily, and also for planning the spaces that we have and renovating Duronka Town House and Town Hall, this town hall.
Okay, now I have one of those questions. How can, Mr. Jenks, we're going to start with you. How can we continue to promote economic development of our downtown area without losing the ambiance to the friendly, accessible village community?
So I think, just sort of tying in the last question, communication, and on a meta-level, this question, communication about the functions of what the town does. So the chart that Dan showed in the earlier forum, I've seen the chart, but I had to like Google Pelham Governance Cheat Sheet to find it, and I would like to be able to find it just more readily. And as far as keeping the character, I mean, I think more clear communication is just going to be helpful.
Thank you.
So a couple of things. Next year is the 250th anniversary of this great nation we live in, and Pelham was one of the, is the first town incorporated in Westchester. is the first town incorporated in Westchester. There was the Battle of Pelham. I think it's commemorated over there. We can work with businesses, the Recreation Department, the different nonprofit organizations, the American Legion, to celebrate that. And also, Chamber of Commerce. We do, we work very closely with them now on Small Business Saturday. The Recreation Department works with them to provide holiday activities and drive business, residents down to our businesses. So just enhancing those events, particularly for next year, but ongoing.
Well, I will echo what Kara said. We do work very closely down with the Chamber on the holiday events. You know, I just lost my train of thought. I'm nervous, so you have to excuse me a little bit. I think we can expand that. I'm recalling an incident that happened a couple of years ago regarding our parking lot and being approached by a village member with a complete plan on our parking lot in the town. That's kind of not how we work together. So if we're going to work together on parking space, economic development, it really should be face-to-face or in a committee membership or some other way, not be told how your parking lot should be used.
Okay. The next question, I'll start with Ms. McGlaughlin. Affordable childcare within Pelham is in extreme need, and childcare facilities are massed out. How can the town support the growth of one of the oldest nonprofits, Pelham Children's Center, with achieving its mission of striving to make its program affordable to families with varying financial needs?
I understand that concern greatly. I was on a wait list there and did not get my children in, so we did not have that opportunity. But it is definitely a gem in this town. We support them in every single way we can. They do, as Supervisor McGlocklin said, they do rent space from us. We are very accommodating with them. And if we had more space, we would definitely let them expand.
Space should be capitalized. S-P-A-C-E. Not for just the town, but for both villages. It is at a premium in this town, as everybody can tell. So if there was a bigger space they could go to, that we managed, maybe we would consider that. We just don't have a bigger space to put them in. So we do have a plan for the Town House and Town Hall to be revamped and redone, and it's in the process and beginning now. But I wish I had place to put them so that they could grow and double in size.
So I think having a clear, comprehensive plan that's visible to everybody, that takes account of all stakeholders, whether that's lessees, or participants in recreation, or patrons of the library, and having all of those components clearly documented with what those goals are in that comprehensive plan that everybody can see is going to go a long way towards making the steps that we need to take to make Pelham Children's Center a more available place for everybody that really needs it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I don't know if this is appropriate to tell you. I'll start with Ms. Nansky. Our downtown has so much potential to be vibrant and accessible, especially for young families and residents who want to walk or bike. Would you encourage the implementation of bike lanes, especially to and around town and the train station? What about increasing more bike racks in restaurants, shopping, and the train? As those tend to get filled up.
I don't control. That has been repeated here a million times tonight. But I will tell you that we have been working with NYSERTA, which is a program to look at energy-efficient vehicles in the town. And part of what came out of that survey is stuff about bike lanes and parking bikes. Again, we don't control what goes on in the village streets, but I'm sure some of that will be shared with both village administrations when the survey's printed, so.
So I'm going to disagree with what was said in the supervisors' forum, and a little bit with what Ray said. I think there is a role for the town to play, certainly in bike culture, and we can do that through recreation. But I think that we also have opportunities to capitalize on, as limited as it may be, the space that we have, and look at what the options are for providing options for bike storage, or for bike racks, or what have you, on any of the town properties.
The original survey that Ray was referring to was to support, the survey was conducted to ask residents what they wanted from a more green perspective. And bike lanes did come out. Space to house or lock up bikes in town and the village. We will definitely share that with the village, both villages, and how that can help. But we do have a town parking lot. As things get moved around and we get that renovated, or repaved, et cetera, perhaps there is space that we can add bike racks there. But yes, I agree, changing the culture of the town. And if we're leaders in the town, we should advocate for what the people, the residents, want.
Thank you. Mr. Jenks, Pelham could benefit from having recycling containers along Wolf Lane. Additional trash cans along some of the main streets would cut down on trash being dumped, especially used dog wastebags. What are your thoughts about adding this option for residents?
It sounds great. And it's something that personally, I think, would be a great idea. As a member of the town council, it's difficult to see, within the scope of town council's governance, how we can make that happen.
I would pass this great idea on to our villages and let them know that if we can assist them in any way, we'd be happy to help.
I concur. I don't know what else I can say to the question. We can put a recycle bin right here on our property here.
And when we give out dog licenses, we can give out poop bags.
Okay, I'm just going to read this question, but I don't think it's relevant. Since the Manor has plenty of tax revenue and has been in the black for several years, can you commit to not raise Village of Four Manor taxes next year? And what about the Village of Pelham? And Ms. McGlaughlin, I'll start with you.
Thank you. I live in the Village of Pelham Manor, and I would love that. But I also know, in this climate, with interest rates where they are, with inflation where it is, costs of doing business is skyrocketing, from insurance to medical benefits. So we have to deal with the reality of what's going on in our world. But I don't control anything to do with the Village of Pelham Manor.
We can only control the town board budget and what our taxes are and what our expenditures are. You could make suggestions, but I don't know if anybody would listen to us.
I will not, like, I will not, as a town council member, raise taxes in Pelham Manor.
Well, good for you.
Okay, next question, Ms. Nansky. What can be done to enforce current traffic laws, especially regarding sign-running, speed, and crossing intersections in front of schools?
Okay, well, I'm not going to repeat what Dan said. We can't control that. I would just hope that report of that committee would come out soon, because I keep asking for it, and our board keeps asking for it also. It's the timeliness of it. I mean, we can help in any way we could, if the villagers asked us, or a constable for something, for some, I don't know. But I can't control that now.
We can work with the library to get more books in circulation on urban planning and development, and ways to improve traffic calming so that that information is more accessible to everybody in Pelham through the library. We appreciate you for that.
Yes. And my answer is, I am going to make a commitment to stop at every stop sign, to drive 25 miles an hour, to let people cross in the crosswalks.
Okay, Mr. Jenks, this is from, somebody wrote this. I am concerned about the limited number of social and recreational activities for our teens. What more can we do as a town to provide healthy opportunities for our teens to socialize and have fun together?
So I think we have a lot of opportunity through Pelham Recreation. And as a father of a five-year-old and a six-month-old, it's thinking about activities for teens is a ways off. And only having a five-year-old and a six-month-old, I don't really know what the current offerings even are. But I grew up in a town in upstate New York, and there were monthly teen nights through the town recreation that I went to at the Spiegel Community Center, which is still a huge resource for the town of Pittsburgh today. Any kind of programming like that, I think is going to be a great opportunity for students, especially, I just saw that Gen Z and Gen Alpha are basically wholesale rejecting consumption of alcohol. And so it's really important to be able to provide a lot of venues for teens to hang out and socialize.
Is it me, or? Okay. I have been the liaison to the Recreation Department, and I'm also the liaison to Pelham Together right now. And the Recreation Department runs monthly teen nights at the YMCA in New Rochelle. There's a bus that takes them there. It is very well-attended. The offerings are different each time, which is exciting. So kids can swim, or bike, or, no, bike, I'm sorry, play volleyball, basketball, lots of fun activities. But I've also invited Pelham Together's Youth Council to come and speak to the board, the council, and tell us, what do you want? Tell us, I'm not a teenager. I don't know what's fun to you. My kids are 21 and 22 now, and they don't even know what the 15-year-olds want. So listening to those people, listening to the teens.
I agree with what's been said. You know, we run a wonderful camp program in this town. It's the best bargain in town. Tiny tots, recreation. And we just had this conversation at the budget meeting about what happens to those kids when they turn 13, 14, and 15. And is there something we can do as the town and the Recreation Department to keep them busy? This was primarily about summer and the weeks that you don't have camp and you don't go to school yet. So that was discussed yesterday, and we're hoping to work with that youth advocate at Pelham Together to do that.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if this is appropriate. You could just skip a few of them. What services, oh, we start with Ms. McGlaughlin. What services do you see can be combined with the Manor and the town to save money on contracts? Do you foresee any possible sharing of services with other close by municipal entities?
Well, I believe the ambulance service is a great example. We contract with Eastchester Volunteer Ambulance Corps. They provide the EMTs. It's our ambulance and our fly car, and they are housed here. They are dedicated to us, but we work with that organization. So that's an outside municipality. As Supervisor McGlocklin mentioned earlier, when one of the villages doesn't want to do something, state law requires the town to do it. So the Village of Pelham does not do dog licenses. So we issue dog licenses for the Village of Pelham. However, Village of Pelham Manor issues their own, so we don't have to do it for them. We also do things like EZ passes. If you need to buy an EZ pass, come on up. Get married. We do that, too.
I don't know what we can do to save money on contracting, since I don't think we even contract for the same things. I mean, benefits, well, you can't even do it on a benefits effort, because benefits are all different. So I'm not sure that there is anything except more open communication and talking and sitting down together. If a problem arises, we had a problem with our prisoner van. Supervisor McGlocklin reached out to both villages. Can you help me? Yes, they're going to help us. It wasn't a contract, but it was an agreement to do what we needed to do to service with the prisoner van.
Yeah, I have nothing to add.
Okay, Ms. Nansky. The recycling schedule is excessive.
Oh, it's a different one, okay.
Now it is once a week for both plastics and cardboard. Why was the new schedule necessary and do others find that excessive?
I can't answer that question for either village at all. I know that we have once-a-week pickup. We did scream in the beginning in the Village of Pelham, but it has worked out beautifully, so I don't have anything to say.
Okay, you're good. Okay, Mr. Jenks.
Yeah, I think is one of the services that is outside of the scope of town council. But I will say that we also have, personally, we've adapted and made changes in our own consumption and recycling patterns to fit the weekly recycling schedule.
So when I first moved to Westchester, it was recycle day, and I did it wrong. And that was the smartest thing I ever did. My husband took over, and for 23 years, I don't know where the, I don't know anything. And it's the responsibility of the two villages.
Okay, Mr. Jenks, Pelham could benefit from having recycling containers along Wolf Lane. Additional trash cans along some of the main streets could cut down on trash being dumped.
You asked this one? Yeah.
Think so.
Yeah. Oh, that was a different one.
No, 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 because Ray, Ray said that we would put a recycle bin,
Right here.
Right here.
Yeah, we asked that one.
Thanks, Mike.
But that's a good idea.
All right.
Question number six. I'm keeping track.
All right, so this is the last question. And if you have any questions from the audience, I'll answer this one. What is your vision for the town of Pelham in three to five years? And how about in 10 years? And do you have a strategic plan? And we start with Mr. Jenks.
I thought we just started with me. I thought we just started with me. So my vision is to continue to enhance the amazing programming that we already have that's within the responsibility of the town. And I will say, I don't have a plan. But my plan is to, as a town council member, support the process of developing a comprehensive strategic plan in the same way that I do in my regular day job. So my goal is, in three years' time or in five years' time, everybody that's here or everybody that's watching or anybody in the town of Pelham can go to the town of Pelham website, click the link for the Comprehensive Plan 2026, and not just see what the plan is, but see what progress we've made against all of the targets on the plan so far.
We don't have a plan now for five, 10 years. I think things change quite rapidly. I know in corporations and nonprofits, what used to be a standard practice has now been shortened, shortened, shortened. However, we need to get feedback from our residents and hearing what they need. The demographics of the town of Pelham are a lot different than 23 years, 20 years ago when I moved in, and we need to reflect that. And we need to understand, are we younger? Are we older? Are we in the middle? Where do people come from? What do they expect for living in a small town? And putting that against the resources we have, trying not to raise taxes, understanding where our resources, where we can get grants, and understand that the village, that the county and the state are our partners, and working to execute that way.
We don't have, currently have a written three-to-five- or 10-year plan. I don't think it's a bad idea, but I would stick with three because I think, I agree with Kara, going out that far is too much. In the last three years, this whole town has, the complexion has changed completely in this town based on COVID and sales and moving and people, so it is very different. I don't think that our strategic plan can be done without some reaching out to the villages because we're only responsible for such a small circumspect of responsibilities and services. I think it would be important to involve them.
Okay. And I apologize if you write, I did ask the question.
That's okay.
Okay. Are there any questions from the audience? No? Okay.
Yeah, I have one. And this is, you can do an ask and answer on this one, but because it's not the town council's job, but just by our calculations at home examiner, we have one business after another.
Can you speak a little louder?
We have one business after another failing or closing down in the hopes that a new business will take over. We have, you know, it's very sad that Pastor Billy Wise and the Wise family, the Wise Black family, decided they want to get out of the business. I guess what I want to know is, who's going to step in? Who can reach out to the Wise family and say, "Thank you so much for what you've done for 40 years. We love you. We want to help you with this transition." And what can we do to bring another hardware store into town? Like, we could push it off on the village or push it off on, you know, maybe it's not technically your job, but I think we all want a thriving business community here. And I think we don't see a thriving business community here. There's a few rare exceptions. There are just many, many small businesses that are turning over. So anyway, gosh, I know it's not your job, but I would like to hear any of you, any of you, speak up on this. Thank you.
Ms. McLaughlin.
Working with the Chamber of Commerce, again, I miss Wise Hardware, too. I shop there at least a couple of times a week. Billy was definitely a beloved member of the community. I don't know how to reach them, so I want to also respect them. I don't know if they're trying to sell it or what. But working with the Chamber of Commerce, providing, maybe it's more days like small business, Saturday, which is right after Thanksgiving, and doing something in the spring, working with the Junior League and the civics about having community events where we drive traffic downstairs, down Fifth Avenue and Wolf's Lane. It's, when I was at the Junior League, I started the first event that got everybody. We closed the streets, kids rode their scooters. It was terrific, doing more of those.
Thank you.
I would think for the Wise family, I think the town and both village leadership should get together and sit down with them. I don't see a problem with that. I think that's very appropriate, and maybe they can give us some input and insight. I mean, I think this is a traumatic time for Mrs. Wise, but when the time is right, we can do that for sure.
So retail businesses thrive on foot traffic and to the extent that we can do more music events, art events, water gun fight, like anything that brings people to the physical location where they're going to walk past the building. They may not go in that day, but the foot traffic, and it's really foot traffic. It's not cars driving by. It's driving foot traffic to the places where those businesses are, and that's going to be what really drives the success of those businesses.
Thank you. Any other, yes?
My apologies if this was-
Can you speak louder?
Sure. My apologies if this was addressed and I missed it, but I believe there was a fourth candidate running. Has that person dropped out?
She's been a while.
No, she has not dropped out.
Is there an explanation for why she's not here or?
She was unavailable.
I was just told she's not coming. The reason we're done way before schedule is because I timed this for four candidates. I just found out when the candidates received it that four candidates have been practiced, how to pronounce her name. So I don't know why she, I was just told she's not coming.
Okay. Was her availability confirmed when this was set up?
Oh, definitely. Up until the time the candidates received it, we had a name tip, a, you know, a thing, a call-up statement.
A plaque.
Definitely. But any other questions? Okay, so we're going to go to closing statements, and we're going to go the opposite, and you have a minute and a half.
Okay.
Because we don't have, if you want to take a minute and a half, you can.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to thank everybody for their time and attention tonight. I hope you've been informed and inspired by this discussion tonight. As I mentioned in my opening statement, I'm proud to have significantly improved the safety and health of our beautiful community. And I think when we listen to each other, there's so much to be accomplished. So if I'm elected, I pledge to listen first, act with accountability, and bring people together, and to continue our dedicated EMS service, our wonderful recreation programs, our beautiful library, revitalization of both of these two historic buildings, and so much more. Thank you.
Thank you again for coming. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for moderating this. We appreciate your efforts. For the past four years, it has been a privilege to represent you on the town council. I often say that the town oversees the fun stuff, like the library and the recreation department, but we also manage critical services like EMS and the court system. I take this responsibility seriously, and I show up. I show up to get things done, and I want to continue to show up for the town and for you and to give back more. Looking ahead, I'd like to help create a strategic plan, one that not only sets a clear vision for Pelham's future, but also outlines how we'll fund it, because nobody wants to pay more taxes. That way, we can ensure our town has what it needs to thrive now and in the years to come. I'm asking for your vote on November 4th. I'm Kara McLaughlin, and I hope to continue working for you. Thank you.
So I've said a bunch of times, and Kara just said, it's really critical in my mind that we have a documented, available, visible, comprehensive strategic plan. And that's really my initial goal for what we can do on town council. But sort of more fundamentally, I am an analytical, creative problem solver, and my goal in general is to say yes within the constraints of budget, regulation, needs. And that's what I do every day and what I've been doing for my professional career, and that's what I hope to do for the Pelham Town Council. So my name is Mike Jenks, and I hope to gain your vote for town council.